Afternoon and welcome to the afternoon session of City Council. Would you call the roll, please, Carla?
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Novick.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Hales.
Here. I understand Commissioner Novick has an announcement.
So, I just want to let the world know that my office is committed to making Portland a better place now and for many years in the future. Some months ago, Katie Schreiber, my policy director, gave birth to a beautiful boy named Charlie, and he's doing very well. And the other day, Andrea Baldorama, my outreach coordinator to East Portland, gave birth to Rosalia. So, between the two of them, they will ensure that Portland does great in 2040.
Here, here.
Congratulations.
That's great. Good news. Okay, we have, we have an item on the calendar to proceed with at 2:00, and that's number 572. Could you read that, please?
Establish a program to provide incentives, training, and technical assistance to promote voluntary deconstruction as a viable alternative to mechanical demolition.
Thank you. So this is another piece of the council's examination and some, at some levels, reexamination of how we deal with development. We've recently dealt with demolition delay and notice. We've done updated hazmat certification rules, which BDS staff will be present here today to talk about, answer questions about. We were about to begin work on a single-family code update to address issues of scale and, and size and fit, thank you, of infill development in neighborhoods. But deconstruction is the focus today about how we do demolition in those, hopefully rare instances where it's justified, do it in a way that perhaps creates more jobs than simply demolishing the house or structure, improves safety for workers and neighbors, reduces waste, avoids carbon law, avoids just dumping carbon. The industry, of course, exists, and we have some folks here from the industry that deal with deconstruction. But even despite that innovation, we still see most houses being outright demolished rather than demolition and salvage. So I'm really excited about this discussion. I'm excited about the work that's been done. We've got a team here from the Bureau to kick us off, and then some folks from the community as well. So, Michael and Sean, thank you for being here this afternoon, and we've got a presentation for us. Take it away.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Michael Armstrong with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. I'll provide just some brief context for this, and then Sean will describe the proposal in front of you today. As you noted, Mayor, today's resolution addresses deconstruction specifically, and we are mindful that this is one piece of this fairly complex constellation of, of issues that are about to appear on the screen here, related to demolitions, touches affordability, touches, you know, the issues around delay that council took up back in February, touches on neighborhood character and compatibility. What we want to talk about today is deconstruction. So when houses do need to come down, we want to do that in ways that provide the best benefits to the community, and deconstruction really can be a great example of a triple bottom-line approach where it's better for jobs. You know, we get six jobs from deconstruction for every job that's created in a demolition project. It's better for neighborhood safety and health. You know, you take something down carefully, you get less dust, you can deal with any solvents or other things that you uncover along the way. Certainly better for carbon emissions, avoids the need to produce all these virgin raw materials, and produces waste as well. And then, of course, it's producing a valuable building product. It's often high-quality, and it's often affordable. So there are really a whole host of benefits that deconstruction provides to the community. In February of this year, council took action around the delay and notification provisions around house demolitions. And at that time, Mayor, you had asked us to work together with stakeholders to bring a proposal back that would provide incentives and otherwise address deconstruction. And so that's what we have back for you today. This resolution would establish a voluntary incentive-based deconstruction program. We've identified funding in the solid waste management fund that we will come back as part of the fall bump to try to secure. And meanwhile, we'll go ahead and get this program set up and be ready for the funding. And then, this is intended as a pilot, so we'll be working closely with the community, both the deconstruction service providers, contractors, community members, so that in September of 2016, we'll be able to come back and report on what we've learned, how it's going, and recommendations for options at that time. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sean, and he'll describe the details of the proposal and just a little more background on deconstruction.
Great, great. Thanks, Michael. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Sean Wood. I'm the construction waste specialist for the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. And I want to interrupt the flow of things just a little bit and talk about some terminology so we can all be on the same page today. So when it comes to building removal, there's a couple of different options. One is demolition, and this is one of the concerns in the neighborhoods. These houses come down usually through mechanical means, using a large excavator, and the building is torn down, and the materials are sent to a recovery facility where they're sorted for recycling. A lot of the wood gets burned for energy recovery, and that's called hog fuel. I don't know if we'll hear that term today, but I'll throw it out there. And then, a lot of the material ends up in the landfill, so despite efforts to harvest some of that material for recycling, it does end up in the landfill often. And then, an alternative to mechanized demolition is deconstruction. So this is where a building is disassembled typically by hand. In the reverse order, it was constructed in order to salvage materials for reuse. So a difference between reuse and recycling, reuse is repurposing salvaged building materials, so using things like wood flooring or sinks for their intended purpose, and not necessarily crushing those up and creating a new material or a new product, which is recycling. And then again, when we talk about wood recycling, we're really talking about burning that for fuel or energy recovery. We established a deconstruction advisory group back in April and met a total of five times, and got really good information from a group of interests ranging from the salvage industry, so both for and nonprofit deconstruction experts, historic preservation, we had building, building builders, contractors, and recyclers, as well as representatives from the United Neighborhoods for Reform, or UNR. We also had membership from the Development Review Advisory Committee, or DRAC, and then also staff from BDS and Metro. And I'd like to personally thank those members that came to the meetings and contributed a lot of their expertise and their commitment to the issue, and then also members of the public who also attended. Using their, their information and expertise, BPS, like Michael said, is proposing a phased approach, so starting with a voluntary incentive program and then looking at next steps for requirements for minimum salvage. The, the deconstruction incentive pilot would include training. So currently, BPS is working with our procurement's staff to develop a deconstruction training, a two-day training that will hold in September for the prime contractor development program, so we could potentially use that as a model going forward with training during the pilot program. We'll also provide technical assistance, so going out, meeting with folks on job sites, answering phone calls, meeting with firms. And then, I think an important aspect of this is the program and project promotion. So how do we leverage a, a small project and get as much media attention out of that? What can we do with our own website and our own tools to get that information out into the public and promote deconstruction? And then, financial incentives, again, would come from the solid waste management fund. We, I've identified $50,000 that we could use and distribute on a grant-based process. So that would include a selection committee based on industry experts and neighborhood representation, and we could distribute that using a set of criteria that could include innovation and ways of reducing the time it takes to deconstruct, or reduce the cost of deconstruction, or innovative methods to achieve those. And, you know, the, the program would do promotion, but also what, what's the story on the actual projects, and what can they do to promote deconstruction in their project? We can also look at criteria around the advancement of equity, and how is the project, how is the project contributing to the community? And then, commitment to training. So are our projects going to kick off an existing deconstruction firm and taking things a little bit farther, and using the training as a way to achieve that? And then, of course, reporting back in, to council in September of 2016 with additional steps, recommendations, and report on how the, the, the program is going. And then, in terms of schedule, what we're recommending is kicking off the pilot in fall of 2015, so fall this year, and then reporting back to council in September, so roughly a year of operating the pilot. And then, when we discuss next steps, if those include some sort of minimum salvage requirements, staff would go and work with the community and continued work with the deconstruction advisory group to implement those changes, and then begin, you know, launch that Phase Two in summer of 2017. And then, we envision, staff envisions, the deconstruction advisory group continuing to meet between now and the, the future, so to continue that good work. There's a lot of compelling reasons to be more aggressive with deconstruction. You'll hear about some of those today, but BPS really feels that a phased approach will be the best way to go. Benefits of the pilot help inform us of what those next steps are. We can figure out how to measure salvage materials. You know, do we do that by weight, or volume, or use a deconstruction calculator? We can also better understand the issues related with compliance and making sure things actually happen in the field. And we can reward and learn from innovative projects. We can, it also gives us time to develop and conduct training and education to get the, the rest of the industry up to speed, and hopefully the time to build capacity within the salvage industry, and allow time for the building and demolition industry to adapt as we look towards future steps.
When you say we'll, uh, learn from innovative projects, I'm curious, don't we have a pretty good knowledge base about how large-scale deconstruction projects have worked in, in Portland? And I'm thinking, for example, when Home Forward did the redevelopment of Columbia Villa, the new Columbia. My, my understanding is that they decided to go the deconstruction route, and so there was a, a big effort to deconstruct those, those older homes. And, and presumably, from that, they learned about, you know, what works, what doesn't, was it cost-effective, you know, and the like. So, when we say we're reward and learn from innovative projects, are we also looking backward at, at the experience of other agencies and partners in doing deconstruction? Or are we, are we, are you looking prospective in terms of what we learned under the pilot?
Yeah, so there is a large base of knowledge out there, and we've got folks here in the audience today that do this for, for a living, and they certainly have a lot of knowledge. There's opportunities using the, the expertise of the deconstruction industry and potentially coupling that with the demolition industry. So for example, in Seattle, hybrid deconstruction is, is probably the most typical method for pulling down a building, and that's where they leverage the power and speed of a piece of equipment, the excavator, to lower walls and get those down on the ground where the workers can work on them more safely and efficiently. So something like that is an example of rewarding innovation and learning from that. So that's gonna, it's gonna increase the, the speed at which they take down a building and potentially lower costs.
Okay, anything else?
I believe that is it.
Okay. Questions for Sean or Michael? Thank you both. And we have some invited testimony I want to call up. Joe Connell from Habitat Restore, and Mary Helen Kincaid from the DRAC, Orlando Simpson from, from City of Rosa's Disposal and Recycling. And then we have a couple more, but let's take those three first, and welcome. Thanks for your involvement in this. We'd like to start.
I guess I'm supposed to go first. Good afternoon, Mayor Hales, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. It's, it's great to be working on this project with you all. My name is Joe Connell. I am with Habitat for Humanity. I'm Vice President of Retail Operations for us, and that means I oversee all three of our restores and our deconstruction program. I know you're, I'm pretty sure you're all familiar with Habitat and what we do and kind of how we do it, so I won't backtrack on that. But what I would like to point out, which is unique for us and unique in this, in this setting we're in, is that we're a mortgage lender, a developer, a builder, a deconstruction contractor, a reuse retailer, and a neighborhood advocate. We play a pretty unique role within this city, I believe, and I think our concerns touch a lot of the, the broad scope of concerns in this topic, all the way across the boards. So, then I want to point out a little bit of what reuse and some of our deconstruction work has done for us and done for the community through us over the, over the last year. Our program this year has exceeded $3 million in sales and income. We have raised over $1 million in cash for Habitat home building here in the Portland metro area in one, in one year. We have diverted 10 to 12 million pounds of materials from the landfill or recycling. We've created 30 jobs, and we've, we have 59,000 workforce readiness or volunteer hours in our stores this year. I point these out because this was all made possible by reused materials. None of this would exist as part of our, part of our program without the diversion of materials that was, that were either going to be thrown away or wasted. So that's a tremendous impact in our mind, on the community, from these types of materials that we're talking about. So I support, we support this resolution because we know we can do more. We're just touching the tip of the iceberg here with what we do. We know that. We see, we see projects slip, slip through our fingers all the time, and we know we can do more. And we know the need is great. There's a lot more that we could do to build our programs. There's a lot of waste we could divert. There's a lot of homes we can build. So, there's a lot of pieces here that can fit together for us. We do believe that this program would open doors for us and others in our industry, and help build a broader industry that will make deconstruction more affordable and make it a more vital part of our local building industry. I think to date, we've been very separate, and I think I would love to see this program because it would help build together bridges between our building industry and our deconstruction and reuse industry, and I think we can do a lot more, a lot more together. We also believe that we need to find a balanced way to work together to promote further reuse and deconstruction while meeting as many of our mutual goals as possible and removing the barriers along the way. This is why we support the voluntary incentive-based approach outlined here, so that we can together learn how to move into a more fuller and more productive use of our resources throughout the city. Also, while I'm here, I want to thank the, the BPS team. They've been great to work with. Sean's been great to work with this, over these last five weeks. I don't know about you guys, but I'm really proud of our city and that they have this department, and that they do the work they do. So, thanks for leading that.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Mary Helen, welcome.
Hi. For the record, I'm Mary Helen Kincaid, the Chair of the Development Review Advisory Committee. Our official representative, Kristen Wells, attended the first couple meetings and then got employed by the city and couldn't fulfill the rest of it, so I got stuck in the chair today. I'm just, I usually operate from the standpoint of tell me the things I don't know, so that you don't keep hearing the same things, but I just want to really emphasize the point that, that this proposal is a result of about 16 months ago, when DRAC started their attention in March, of demolitions. And we were focusing on life and safety, but when we went out to the community, to all the meetings that we went to, we heard about hazmat control, and we heard about concerns about deconstruction and landfill. And so we, Jeff Fish, who was the then-chair, encouraged that this, a separate committee be addressed so that it's, was carefully analyzed and better incentives were found that we were able to do a proposal. So we were really excited that this committee was formed and worked in a very expedient fashion. And the other thing I wanted to point out is that two major accomplishments have happened in this area in 16 months, and I'm hard-pressed to say that, I don't think that that much has been accomplished in a lot of areas. So I'm very proud of BDS and BPS and the citizens involved, that we're able to bring these forward to protect citizens and also bring alternatives to the table about what happens when a demolition happens. The, the one thing that I keep saying repeatedly is that deconstruction is a form of demolition, and there's not a person in the room that doesn't think that deconstruction is not a good thing, but sometimes people get that confused, that their, a house is being deconstructed, and somehow that doesn't register with them. And then, the site expert, site development and excavation has to come in and take the basement out in those cases, and so there's some considerations there, and when we do public outreach, that'll be one thing that I think we need to clarify for people, so that we don't get them angry again, that they think we're saving the house by deconstructing it and building it somewhere else, or, in, in some cases, that does happen. I think this is a great opportunity to connect, as Joe mentioned, the deconstructors, the building industry. Jeff's not here to defend himself, but he was one of the first to say he had no idea what was involved in deconstruction, and it had always been too expensive, and he didn't know. So they worked with Love at Construction, and I don't know where that went, but they had a sample house, and they went out and did bids, and back and forth. So I think it's a great opportunity to connect those people and find a ground for them to work on, to make this fair and equitable for everybody. The issues that came up with the demolition issue and was deconstruction, the hazmat handling, and the infill and design, and you're addressing all of those, so I wanted to give you credit that those things are moving forward and citizens are participating. I think that a lot of great people worked on these, and in a short period of time, so it proves that we can do good things. There's, I think you'll hear testimony today for mandatory deconstruction and penalties, and I just don't think that a negative reaction to this is going to work. I think a positive approach of incentivizing people that are doing good work, sharing that good knowledge, helping other people who don't understand how the process works, doing training. It doesn't help in a, and you all know this, but I've got to say it out loud, it doesn't help in a collaborative effort to villainize any of those stakeholders and say, one person is the cause, the root of all evil. Everybody is involved in this process, and we need to make it work for everybody in some fashion, and demolition, again, was that issue. Nobody was happy, and in the end, I think that was a success. Everybody had to collaborate and give in a little on what was uncomfortable to them, and I think that same thing will happen here. Several builders that came to the meetings and participated in these meetings even said they didn't care where the incentives went. They just wanted this to be a fair and equitable program that would work for everybody. In the end, the property owner's the one who will really benefit from the incentives, because they'll be able to do something that feels good to them and that's not going to cost them an extra $3,000, $4,000 on top of what the costs already are. It might not be the best analogy, but it was the best one that I could come up with was curbside recycling and how that was handled. We didn't go out and penalize people and carry a big stick and say, you must use those. Many of my neighbors complained, and I was one of the people that went out on the flyers early on and said, here's what you get to do, and I got yelled at about the roll carts, and I got yelled at about, every two weeks, this is infrequent as they could get their garbage, and the things were stinky, and they had rats, and I live in a wetlands area, and all of those things. Don't hear a peep. Everybody likes it now. I mean, it's almost a community event. I mean, you know, they get to roll their roll carts out, they get to help their neighbors. So it just took a while for people to get used to what it was, something new. And change is hard for all of us. I use that example because people just get in a pattern, and they have things, and now you've added roll carts and things. So I, I think that same thing's going to happen here on a grander scale. I think we need to continue the positive approaches that this proposal brought forward, reward those people, whoever they are, that are doing good things. Sean mentioned, you know, incentives for best practices. I think there's a lot out there. I've learned a lot, and I think that the committee as a whole agreed that this is a good way to teach people how to do good things. Joe had one, a classic quote that I really like, and we should somehow fashion this in a marketing thing, he says, "I want everyone to feel the love of deconstruction." And I think if we can get to that point with a phased-in approach, we're, we're going to create the jobs, we're going to save precious resources. People will learn what's being recycled, and maybe they're going to want to start using those. They will all attest to the fact that there's a huge market that's developed over the years. So, I think this is a great start to things. I think that the building community is on board, they're just concerned about it being fair and equitable, and not be put in a villainized situation where they don't believe in, they believe in, I can't speak for them, probably got a letter from the HBA, but, but the incentive program should be so that the process works better, not just reward those people who you believe should be rewarded. So I think that's good. I want to echo Joe's comments on the good work by the BPS staff, and I think someone from DRAC will continue on, on this committee and follow it. Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Orlando, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Hales and members of the council. For the record, Orlando Simpson, business owner, City of Rosa's Disposal and Recycling, and our DBA Division, Core Recycling, which is a mature recovery facility that sees a lot of demolition debris, as well as new construction debris. So I have a wealth of, of knowledge in our, in our time being involved with discarded materials and, and managing construction debris. But in regards to why we're here today, I'm here today to support the, the resolution on behalf of the deconstruction program that would foster the necessary innovative growth in the construction industry, and most importantly, create more green-collar jobs for our local economy. Remember, you heard it here. As a, as a rapidly growing city, our sustainable reputation, leadership, and strategies have fostered a substantial amount of this growth. Growth that would have not been made possible had our philosophies not been instilled into the fabric of what makes Portland Portland today. For the various regulations, policies, principles that have become the guardian of our economy, our environment, and most importantly, the people that live here, these new innovative opportunities that exist now would not be so prevalent today. As someone who lives and breathes in the world of discarded materials, as I had mentioned earlier, being a owner of a local earlier, being a owner of a local recycling company, it is extremely important that the city of Portland take a stance and make a conscious decision about how we as a region plan to responsibly manage construction and demolition debris now as well as in the future. I have made a mindful decision of my own to venture into the construction industry specifically in order to provide these very deconstruction services, which will enable my firm to become more diverse and a first of its kind. I have taken many early steps in preparation for this endeavor, such as investing in more real estate in order to stockpile salvage materials, which do have in-use market value, and most notably, being selected to participate in the city's prime contractor development program. And now, I sit here before you today to encourage an incentive-based approach for deconstruction practices because it not only assists small businesses such as mine to enter the marketplace, but it further builds upon the city's sustainability goals and aspirations. The drastic demand for residential living units here in the metro area and fostering the many construction cranes that currently stand is just a small metaphor of the growing demand around salvaged materials. We must be logical and strategic that when the demand is there and the supply does not support it, we as an ecosystem must collectively build that infrastructure. That infrastructure that is necessary to grow that supply. The window of opportunity is wide open right now, and I highly encourage your support, therefore, we can see the continued reuse and salvage markets innovative growth in the domestic and international marketplace. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for these panelists? Thank you very much. Sorry, we've taken that great volunteer Larry O'Day out of Habitat for a few weekends, but he'll be back. Having knee surgery. Larry, Larry volunteers for, Police Chief volunteers for Habitat almost every Saturday. So, he's temporarily out of action. Have his nail belt back on soon enough. Let's see, I think we have a couple more folks that we invited. Barbara Kerr and Shane Endicott, are they here? Yes, Shane, come on up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right. I know you want to be the tail end.
Okay. Give him that privilege, Barbara?
There's more power. I'll give him that privilege, yes. I respect him well. Okay, so, my name is Barbara Kerr, and I represent the United Neighborhoods for Reform. And I am their representative on the Deconstruction Advisory Group. And as you all know, and have stated so eloquently in the opening to this meeting, which I was so glad to hear, the list of benefits to deconstruction versus mechanical demolition is very long. Meeting Climate Action Plan, Affordable Housing, Economic Development, and most urgently reduces the public's involuntary exposure to hazardous materials. Thank you for including that. When UNR met with the Portland's neighborhoods, forty-three formally signed on to our resolution. But in none of those meetings was deconstruction ever controversial. If a house must be removed and cannot be recited, as you also included, that was great, the public feels deconstruction is a given. The UNR appreciates the city moving forward on making deconstruction the way Portland demolishes, the way Portland demolishes buildings. We would gladly support the resolution if it were amended to, one, direct all public funds for a deconstruction program to go to training, education, and certification for deconstructionists, including the existing industry, and not incentivize contractors and developers, and that these efforts maintain the standards set by the existing deconstruction industry. They are our leaders. Two, shorten the time before deconstruction is required by taking immediate actions to train, inform, and educate to support voluntary deconstruction as soon as possible, and set an endpoint, a measurable goal in terms of full deconstruction. Plus, in order to meet that goal, setting a date for when the DAG committee will determine if a given amount of progress in full or partial deconstruction has been made, which if not reached, will require making deconstruction mandatory. We want to see it happen voluntarily with support. We don't want to have to make it mandatory, but if it's not happening fast enough, that would be the next tool. We recommend that if the proposal cannot be amended as such today, that it be sent back to the DAG committee. In the DAG meetings, we discuss the following concerns related to these requested amendments. Relating to our First Amendment, incentivizing developers was an issue. We feel paying developers to deconstruct or paying deconstruction companies to help lower their bids creates two major problems. One, it misleads the building industry and public into thinking that deconstruction is not a viable business model, a premise that deconstruction industry in Portland has been disproving for the last eighteen years. Two, it further incentivizes demolition of our affordable homes, our homes of character that make up most of our desirable neighborhoods and our historic homes. If you pay people to demolish, they are, we're going to have more demolitions. Relating to the Second Amendment, the concerns about shortening time were, we needed to allow time for developers to transition. But it's not like plastic bags and styrofoam containers. There's no inventory to use up. There are professionals ready, willing, and able to bid new jobs immediately. And I have to say, I started selling used building materials when we founded Rejuvenation in nineteen seventy-seven. That's thirty-eight years ago. The public response was hugely enthusiastic from day one. We including, we including the building industry have had decades to see that deconstruction is where we are going, where we have to go. There has been plenty of time to transition, and some have done so very successfully, but certainly not enough. Another concern was the increased costs to the developers. But it's been shown that the difference in costs depending on, on the building being taken down is in the five to seven thousand dollar range on average, we're talking homes, a small amount compared to what is being paid to buy a house just to tear it down. Developers would have to pay for the abatement of materials that deconstruction will expose. But first, abatement costs have greatly decreased over time. And second, they are going to have to abate, they're going to have to abate as we move toward Senate Bill 705 and further increase control of hazardous materials exposure. As stated in the DAG meetings, eighty percent of the time, a house goes through initial abatement before deconstruction. They have to be called back because they found more hazardous materials in the building when they started to take it apart. Those materials are not found if, if a developer does do the initial abatement before crunching the house. And so, they go up in the smoke. The abatement companies do, just do sampling. You have to take the house apart, you have to open the walls to expose all that possible hazardous materials. As we move toward not allowing hazardous materials to be released into the air, mechanical demolition, except for the concrete foundations, is not going to be feasible. It will have to be done by deconstruction, and the city is doing the building industry a favor in, by supporting them to quickly make the transition to deconstruction. Question came up, can the market handle the influx of materials? I heard in the DAG meetings that deconstruction said yes. Shane will tell you, the rebuilding center sells seven hundred to a thousand doors a month, a month. There's a market. There's a huge market. And that's just locally. Besides condition, volume determines the price of used materials. Therefore, if more, if there are more materials on the market, the prices will be lower. The lower prices fuel an even larger market. The deconstruction is, there was a question if the deconstructionists could respond to the increased workload. I heard, yes, they can. It may not be easy, but these are, these guys are our pioneers. They want to see it happen. They will put their heads out there and their necks out there. Plus, there are also organizations already in the business of training deconstruction laborers and companies. Deconstruction warehouses and yards are not like building a new office building or putting in lots of technical computer facilities, right? Space can be rented. And existing companies would come from out of state, existing businesses such as abatement companies and mechanical demolition companies would expand into deconstruction, and small businesses would spawn. As a personal note, this is what I love about the whole thing the most is because when, back when deconstructionists were called handwreckers, those handwreckers were people who didn't have the education, didn't have the training, just had the care and the work ethic to get a beat-up old truck and go out and start taking buildings apart down to the ground and saved everything. Another issue is time for the city to develop standards and, standards and training. But the, the industry has been around this town for eighteen years. There are people nationally and internationally doing it. You could adapt and adopt what they already have in place. They've been using their standards that long. And BPS is already planning a training for the prime contractors list in September. With the grant from Metro, they could expand it to more individuals and companies wanting to be trained and certified. Earth Advantage has an accredited training already, and the local deconstructions would be available to inform their process. The city could help sponsor information events for builders and developers to gain access to the deconstruction industry from deconstructionists to reuse sales. There's a lot that can be done with nonprofits even in promoting deconstruction and educating the, the industry, the traditional building industry. There was also concern about the city being able to enforce deconstruction regulations. Yes, that can be a nightmare, but not if we make it simple. If the criteria is full deconstruction or partial on the way there, the definitions are pretty simple. As I understand it, full is complete removal to the foundation and partial is removal down to the studs and joists. This has been discussed in the DAG committee. It's easy for both the city to enforce that and also for the neighbors to be watchdogs. The neighbors will watch, and it's, they can tell the difference between not completely deconstructing and completely deconstructing if it's that simple. Deconstruction also greatly, excuse me, reduces the need for the city or any agency to enforce public safety laws for hazardous materials. It's difficult for deconstructionists to avoid following the rules in terms of safety, even if they wanted to. For one, they have more workers out there, and two, the extra time allows for more time to get caught. So, enforcement of hazmat regulations will be easier and more thorough, relieving the city of a major issue to address. We need leadership. We don't need transition or more debate. We need leadership. We need the council to announce that Portland is committed to deconstruction because of all it does for the city. Then, set the goal now. Let the building industry know that, what the city is going to require and why. Give them a head start. If we are beginning the training in the next few months and stating the commitment to deconstruction now, the transitioning can move forward and give DAG a head start on working out the needs that arise. Two, follow through on getting the facts rather than debating. The deconstructionist industry locally, nationally, and internationally has history and studies. As you were saying, Mr. Fish, when Portland moves to deconstruction rather than mechanical demolition, we will attract national and international interest and help. We are not alone and do not need to start from scratch. Three, order an economic study done by an economist to describe the costs and triple bottom line benefits for the city. This could take a year for the study to be done, but it will also serve as an assessment of the success during that year to report back to the public. The timeline that UNR would find accessible is public education, starting with immediate announcement that the city is committed to deconstruction and why, and publicizing efforts such as the training. September two thousand fifteen, this fall, training for labors and contractors leading to certification. Right now, Shaun has planned for the prime contractors' training to be a model. I think we can take that money and expand it to do simultaneous. Okay, so then, by March two thousand sixteen, have DAG review the progress of voluntary constructions. If we're not on track to meet the end goal, full deconstruction becomes mandatory as of September two thousand sixteen. We need leadership, and we need it now. With an average of a demolition a day, we can't wait any longer. We have known for decades that it is what we need to do. UNR does not want to see this proposal go back to the DAG without a strong and responsible resolution. We are asking you to amend it to require the use of funds only for training and education, maintain the high level of standards of the existing deconstruction industry, and take immediate action in starting the transition with a set measurable and short timeline for the goal of deconstruction being the way Portland does demolition if a building must be removed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Thanks. Shane, you get to back clean up.
Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity to share, and thanks for the opportunity to participate on the Deconstruction Advisory Group. I think that the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability did an excellent job and brought a really diverse group of people together. Personally, I have over forty years of deconstruction experience and reuse, and twenty of those, I guess, would be deemed professionally. I'm the Executive Director of R. United Villages, local nonprofit, co-founder of the organization, as well as the rebuilding center, which is one of our biggest projects. We launched in nineteen ninety-eight. And as I think has been said, we divert a lot of building materials, on average, eight tons a day, and we have approximately three hundred people on average come through a day reusing it. And we're, we really are just scratching the surface. I'm just mostly want to restate that I support a lot of what's already been shared through the other testimony as far as the facts and pointing out the benefits of deconstruction and what it would have for our city. I get to see it on a daily basis just from, again, I, well, we're moving, it seems like we're moving a lot, we're just barely scratching the surface. But just today, we have a group of youth in our shop that are making book kiosks that are free for the neighborhoods. You've probably seen them around. But we've had a number of times, youth come through with group leaders, and they build these out of all free reclaimed materials. We also have volunteers coming through. We have over two thousand volunteers coming through a year, representative of every demographic in our community, age, socioeconomic, people going through all kinds of different changes, people who just want to make a positive difference. And they come in and use those materials as a vehicle for improving the social fabric, strengthening the social fabric of our city. And it wouldn't be an opportunity without it. It's incredible work all over. We've been able to donate materials on a regular basis to all kinds of groups and individuals who are doing things for free, everything from Girl Scouts to group youth right now working with the Village Building Convergence and free housing in our city. I should say it's transitional housing, but we've been able to donate free materials to those efforts as well. And I, I guess I would just share that one important role will serve in this city for helping this be successful is that we've always had a policy since we started that we share all of our knowledge and experience for free with anyone, any entity, for-profit or nonprofit, that wants to do this work. They are invited into our organization, and they shadow our employees, they shadow our staff, and they shadow our operations. The only thing I can't give them access to is the personnel files because it's a legal, legal issue. But otherwise, everything else, we don't have any secrets. It's come in, learn how we do this, and export it back to wherever you're going to do these projects, whether they're across the street from our facility or they're across the country. And to restate, the interest in this is international. We have people coming from all over the world. In fact, the last two days, we've had German television and radio network, which is the largest viewed public network in Germany, videotaping our facility and going on our job sites, our deconstruction site, and looking at it as a model. And we've had many other countries come and folks invite us from all over to come and start these in their communities across the country as well as in other countries. And our feedback always is, we don't do that. What we do is we share what we have for free and come, come to us and hang out and take whatever you find is, is useful. So, I just want to restate that we think that we, from our experience, hands-on experience, we see this bringing tremendous value to the citizens, residents of Portland as well as the city as a whole. And that, those networks that are coming here from all over are really looking at our ethos of sustainability. And our organization is committed, as much as we are to the environment and sustainability and economy, really the social fabric of what makes up our, our society and reaching our full potential as a community. So, just wanted to share that we think it's a great idea, we think it's a great direction, obviously. And thank you.
Thank you. I should have probably asked onto this question too, but Barbara raised it, and that is, there was this concern or debate within the advisory group about capacity of the industry to ramp up. So, regardless of whether it's a hugely successful incentive program or a move, more quick or rapid move to mandatory deconstruction, what do you think about that capacity issue? What does that curve look like for you and others in the industry about what, assuming we're moving this direction from less than ten percent of houses that are being demolished, being deconstructed, to twenty, thirty, fifty, eventually a hundred? What are the difficulties, if any, of that change?
Yeah, well, I'll, yeah, I'll liken it to, I use this example the other day. If you've ever flown on a seven forty-seven, they don't have to take twenty or thirty minutes to reach your altitude. You can get there much faster. It's not as comfortable. Your ears will pop, but you can do it. I've been in the country where they, they do that, altitude, altitude much quicker. What would happen is that you would have the industry and people who want to get into the industry moving much faster if the mandate was sooner. That's, that's how it would look. And it would be, organizations like ours would go through some growing pains, would bring on that kind of staffing. We've doubled our staff before in a short period of time. The other way is just a slower incline to getting there. So, that's, that's really how, how it would work. I, when we, we went from six, or actually really four, deconstructionists when we launched our full-time, year-round deconstruction program in nineteen ninety-nine. We had, we ended up getting a lot of recognition on a huge project. We did a city block of homes for the Multnomah Athletic Club. And we had to go from a handful of employees in that department, just the deconstruction department, to over thirty-three in a very short time. It was, as an organization, that kind of growth, we felt it, but at the same time, the benefit- It was as an organization, that kind of growth, we felt it, but at the same time, the benefit was we went from doing a handful of projects to doing a hundred fifty to two hundred projects a year, not all full dismantles. Because you don't, it doesn't have to just be a whole building, it can also be removing reusables. So it's a long answer, but the 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 I think the accurate answer is that you'll see an industry get there either way.
Okay, all right, thank you. Other questions? Barbara, Shane? Thank you both, thanks very much.
Thank you.
And so I don't believe we have any other invited testimony, but people are signed up to speak, so if we could call them, please.
We have six people signed up. The first three, please come on up, are Margaret Davis, Terry Parker, and Sarah Long.
You have PowerPoint there, Margaret?
I just have a picture to show you. I'm trying to get into it, do you know how to get into it?
Carla will help you get that loaded.
Carla can help you.
Carla, I just didn't see the footer. Oh, all right. This guy now, this guy, okay, great.
Thank you for this opportunity to be here today. I'm Margaret Davis, I work with United Neighborhoods for Reform, and also I'm on the boards of the Rose City Park and Beaumont-Wilshire Neighborhood Associations. Take a look at this picture. This was taken Friday, and it shows a demolition at thirty-five fifty-eight Northeast Forty-fourth Avenue, two doors away from me. If you live nearby, your home, any place structure or barbecue in your yard, and your vegetable gardens would be covered in the dust emanating from this demolition. It was a breezy day, so I could clearly see these clouds of of dust billowing across the block. Federal studies have shown that this dust travels up to four hundred feet. The house was under six hundred square feet, but the dust kept coming all day long and even continued this week. What was in that dust? Nobody knows. We do know that it is nearly certain that any home built before nineteen seventy-eight, as this home was, was full of lead paint. Every can of lead paint had fifteen pounds of lead in it. Asbestos also could have been part of the toxic clouds, but again, we don't know what was in those those clouds of dust. Based on public health concerns, this council recently banned smoking in city parks. The health effects of lead and asbestos also are well-known, and the Centers of Disease Control for Disease Control has said that there is no amount of lead that is safe in children. I saw the dust from this demolition coat the swing set my neighbors kept keep for her granddaughters. If public health is as important to this council as you say it is, then I urge you to tackle the uncontrolled release of lead and asbestos with as much seriousness as you did the smoking hazard in city parks. The toxic drift launched by mechanical demolition can be avoided through deconstruction. The careful dismantling of homes coordinated with certified abatement activities helps contain these hazardous materials and sends them to the appropriate facilities. It does carry a small additional cost, but safeguarding our air and earth are worth it. We are worth it. I understand the council doesn't want to touch the toxic issue of hazardous waste, hazardous materials control and enforcement, but Portland needs to address it as it enters its third record-breaking year for home demolitions. The voluntary measures recently instituted by BDS clearly will not protect Portlanders from exposure to lead and asbestos. Developers will pursue business as usual with wasteful mechanical demolition that sends lead and asbestos into our air, bodies, and lungs. You don't have to directly touch hazmat control to fix this problem. You can make deconstruction the safe, sustainable solution. As our elected leaders, you have the opportunity, even the responsibility, to prioritize public health and safety over the profits of a small group of players. If deconstruction was made mandatory in a timely manner as opposed to the voluntary program proposed in the document today, and if the costs of deconstruction were assumed by those profiting from the demolition instead of public monies, UNR could readily support the proposal at hand. The deconstruction advisory group has done fine work, and it would be a shame if its efforts were made moot by tenuous timelines, voluntary status, and payouts to developers to do the right thing. Make deconstruction mandatory and fast-track its implementation, and in so doing, you will put a stop to the toxic clouds that no one should have to ingest. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, thanks very much. Terry, welcome.
Thank you, Terry Parker, UNR Steering Committee. I live in northeast Portland. When a home is to be torn down, it must be done with respect, responsibility, and a high level of sustainability. On December seventeenth of last year, I testified before you stating that Portland is in the rear when it comes to managing home demolitions, and that private property becomes a public problem when seventy-five percent or more of a single-family home is sent to the landfill, and when dust and potentially hazardous materials are spread to and trespass on neighboring properties. Kudos in that a conversation is now taking place within the deconstruction advisory committee. However, the actual pace of progress is moving way too slow. How many more single-family homes will continue to be torn down using an excavator? How much more dust, dirt, and hazardous materials will be sprued into residential neighborhoods and into the lungs of children at play? The estimate on track is that over four hundred vintage, single-family homes will be torn down this year. Most of those tear downs by mechanical demolition, clawing at, ripping apart, and crunching up, crunching up what was once somebody's family home. The resolution timetable can be likened to a local milk run just drifting down on a bumpy branch-lined railroad when the need and the public demand is for high-speed rail. To pick up the pace on the route towards better air quality and deconstruction becoming the norm, any financial incentives in the form of taxpayer dollars must be directed towards growing the deconstruction industry through training, education, and certification. The money should not be going to developers to subsidize the eco-friendly teardown option. Accompanying any taxpayer funding must be an accelerated timetable towards a policy change due date that includes regular progress reports along the way to you, the city council. At the end of the line, the goal must be that deconstruction, that with deconstruction, a significant percentage of materials from any home tear downs are preserved for the reusable market. Ultimately, when the train pulls into the station and the people arrive at their green-inspired designation, deconstruction and the reuse of building materials becomes the standard in Portland if and when a single-family home is torn down. And finally, the city already has a hammer it can use to start pulling nails, even those stubborn nails. Make deconstruction mandatory as a component of the Climate Change Action Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, city commissioners. It is an honor to be able to speak with you today. My name is Sarah Long, and I am here today to speak on behalf of the over half of all Portlanders, even approaching sixty percent of all Portlanders at this point, who are renters. And as we all know, the percentage of people like me in Portland will only increase over time. Tenants, while constituting a majority of the city's residents, are underrepresented when it comes to creating policy and are underrepresented when it comes to you, our elected officials, being able to hear feedback about how those policies are impacting their real lives. Fewer renters can make it to community meetings, fewer renters are able to embark upon the steep learning curve to understand that thing that no one human being can completely understand, the land use rules. I have at this point begun correcting the facts given to me by Kilian Condon. If you don't know who Kilian Condon is, that's indicative of how deeply troubling this all is. Kilian Condon is our only, as in just one guy, DEQ inspector in this entire portion of the state. And he has it easy, he only covers these northwest counties. The other guy covers more than three-quarters of the state. And I have yet to convince him to come inspect a site where I photographed asbestos fibers blowing around in the breeze. I have more stuff in here about being a renter, but I'm just going to skip that, and I want to just go back to what Barbara said. Everything she said was so wonderful, and she is truly one of the pioneers in the city in reuse. She founded rejuvenation. I mean, wow. So, you know, I just want to revert back to what she said and say, we really need appropriate, you know, we need for that fifty thousand dollars that should will be followed by other monies. We need it to go to education and training. It should go to earth advantage, we think. They already have the training program in place. We would like to see a better timeline, and we would like to see, as she said, if with strong encouragement and use of the bully pulpit from the elected officials saying, hey, guys, this is Portland, get on acting like being Portland, okay? Let's reuse and reduce and actually recycle. So, yeah, I would like to say, just I'd like to support her plan, the ones that she already suggested to you, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, next.
Preston Browning, Robert Bernstein, and Brandon Spencer-Hardl.
Robert, go ahead, you're there on first, so you can start first.
Thanks. I'm Robert Bernstein, I live up on Mount Tabor, lived southeast Portland forty-six years since nineteen sixty-nine. And so I was back there, and I'm thinking, well, I came here in sixty-nine, a lot of people came out here from eastern colleges at about that time. I came from Brooklyn, a lot of people came from Columbia. And we started doing things that we felt were the right things. Nobody gave me an incentive to do childcare for feminist functions, or to go to consciousness raising groups, or help out at Friends of Food, or Pupils Food Store. You did things because they were the right things, and that's what Portland should be. I do not personally want any of my tax money going to developers. If they don't want to feel demonized, there is such a simple remedy for that. Don't do things that will lurk in the back of your head as having done the wrong things. It's really very basic. Don't get into some Jungian shadow sort of existence where you feel bad about things and then you feel demonized. Don't don't mess up backyard habitat, don't take away people's views, don't take away people's privacy. You don't want to feel demonized, it's really simple. I'd like to see this program mandatory, and again, I don't want to see any of my money going to incentivize towards developers. Use it towards training and implementation. I would also remind the council that the developers got a break on hookup fees, and I'd like to see that ended. It's my understanding that residential rates for water or sewer could have been eight percent lower if they hadn't gotten this break.
Thank you. Good afternoon, welcome.
Hi. Greetings, member of the council and Mayor Hales. Thank you today for being here and hearing this proposal. My name is Preston Browning. I'm the owner of a business called Salvage Works in North Portland. I also sat on the deconstruction advisory group. Salvage Works has been in operation for five years, started with just myself, ten thousand dollars, and a forklift. We now have nine employees. Our sales have increased a hundred percent every year. And a little background, basically, I am a lumberyard. Every stick of wood in my place is reclaimed, mostly from houses in the Portland area. I'm not a deconstruction contractor. We have a shop where we make furniture and fixtures. So I would like to touch on something that hasn't really been discussed here. I'm going to read you a list of businesses. The Sentinel Hotel, Olympic Provisions, The Ace Hotel, Clyde Common, The Hilton Downtown Portland, Ned Lud, Rejuvenation, Killer Burger, Water Avenue Coffee, Bollywood Theater, Danner Boots, Whole Foods, New Seasons, U.S. Forest Service Downtown, Padi Thai, The Meadow, Salt and Straw, and way too many brew pubs to list. These have a couple of things in common. One is that they're all in Portland, and they are contributors, a small contribution because there are so many more, to the Portland brand. The whole world, the whole country looks to Portland for a number of things. Our food scene, our cocktail and beer scene, our design sensibility, and the sustainability of the city. The other thing that they have in common is that when they built those places, the aesthetic was reclaimed wood. It is a main component of almost every single new build in the city, and we are building more and more. Large developments are happening, mixed use, retail down below. It is something that we're going to see more and more of. You know, reclaimed material is a beautiful material, it's an aesthetic, and it's very, very popular. Really, you know, the world comes to Portland because of Portland. You may or may not know this, but we're big in Japan. We're big in Europe, we're big in Australia, we're big in Brazil. Really, the whole world looks to us.
By the way, one of the ways we know that is the the single best travel guide I've ever seen about Portland is the Japanese guide.
Yes.
And in fact, it's been so successful here that they're about to translate it into English.
Yeah.
So they can use it domestically as a travel guide.
Right, and Korean. There's now a Korean edition.
Right, Chinese next, I think, yeah.
Yeah. I have a friend who is working on a project called Ride the Yellow, which is to promote the yellow line and the businesses along the yellow line, and many, a number of them, which is the Rebuilding Center, Salvage Works, a place called Beam &amp; Anchor, is part of that Portland design brand, and all of that is reclaimed. So, you know, it's a brand that is being exported, and reclaimed materials are being exported. You know, we do work in the Bay Area, in California, in Seattle, we ship materials around the around the country. And so what it is, is it's a it's a product, and it's a growing, growing business. So I really believe that this program will, you know, help build the capacity for deconstruction contractors, and I do believe that, you know, the timeframe proposed is necessary to really to help the industry grow. So, and, you know, I believe that that those incentives should go to deconstruction contractors to training, but also possibly to help them build their capacity a bit, buy some equipment, that sort of thing. Because really, once the cost of a deconstruction becomes the same as the cost of a demolition, everyone's work is done.
Yeah.
It will be the given. So, thank you all very much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming.
You bet. Thanks.
Thank you. Brandon, welcome.
Mayor Hales, commissioners, my name is Brandon Spencer-Hardl. I'm here today representing Restore Oregon. I've had the opportunity to speak with you more in the last three months and the last ten years combined, so it's been good. Today, I served on the deconstruction advisory group, so I'm here to talk about that experience. I'm here today to support the resolution in front of you regarding establishing a framework for increasing the percentage of demolished materials that are salvaged for reuse. I've appreciated the fast-paced conversations to arrive at today's proposal, in no small part, thanks to Sean Wood at BPS. I ask that the council consider exploring a pragmatic program that would phase in disincentives as well to traditional demolition. Because only a minimal amount of funding will be available for the proposed incentive program, if we want to substantially increase the amount of waste diverted from the landfill, I personally believe it will be necessary to implement additional programs that dissuade property owners from choosing the path of mechanical demolition. Demolitions generally, and mechanical demolition specifically, have external costs. One of those costs is the loss of embodied energy when materials are sent to the landfill. For example, Portland's typical demolished house is twelve hundred square feet and generates a hundred and fifteen pounds of demolition waste per square feet. That's about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand pounds of waste per house. In terms of weight, landfilling the three hundred and fifty houses that applied for demolition permits over the last year is the equivalent of four hundred and thirty-eight million aluminum cans, thirty-three million glass beer bottles, or one point five billion pieces of copy paper. In order to best manage the waste stream generated by our city's recent increase in demolitions, I ask that you help foster deconstruction by phasing in disincentives to pair with the incentive proposal. A thoughtfully designed and gradually implemented landfill tax on the demolition of buildings that could otherwise be reused or salvaged would allow Portland to recoup some of the external costs of demolition and direct the marketplace towards deconstruction and salvage. I want to close by saying that I very much appreciate council's recent attention to the issues of neighborhood change. You've made tremendous strides in the past few months to address many of the concerns that historic preservationists and neighborhood advocates have brought before you. I'll close by just saying that I hope that you support the resolution in front of you, and I hope you look at it as one more step in the multi-step process of addressing Portland's growing pains right now, and that you consider a next step after today of looking at disincentives to mechanical demolition. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Questions for these folks? Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
That's all who signed up.
Okay. I want to get staffed. I might want to get staff to come back up. I've got some questions, and other council members might have questions as well. Certainly heard some interest in moving faster here, which frankly, I'm pretty sympathetic to. So I want to hear council reactions to that. Also want to let people know that I've already started asking staff to prepare some policy options for council on the subject of disincentives for traditional demolition. So appreciate Brandon bringing that up. That is a logical next step, so that we try to change that equation as well. So we want people, when they absolutely, positively must have to demolish a structure, to do so through deconstruction. But we also want to reduce the number of structures that are subject to that and raise the cost in terms of penalties for deconstructing or demolishing a structure that has value. So I'm very interested in that piece of the equation as well, and I think that's a logical next step. But what do you think about the suggestion, maybe, that we come back more quickly than a year from now? Give us some reactions to what you heard in terms of testimony here about how can we go a little faster, even if we stick, at least in the short term, with the incentive approach? When is the logical breakpoint where we say, you know, okay, as we just did with commercial building, energy use, now you have to do it? We've been through that cycle on that issue. So, Michael, your thoughts about that might be particularly relevant, given that you were the architect of that transition. So say more.
I think there's certainly a parallel. And I think you heard through the testimony, there's a lot of agreement about direction. The question is how far, how fast? And, you know, again, from the testimony, the deconstruction advisory group discussed exactly this question. And there was strong consensus to move forward quickly with a pilot, mixed opinions about whether and how soon to make that mandatory. And so that's what led us to the recommendation in front of you. I'll defer to Sean. I think it's certainly possible that we could come back sooner with a report on how it's going and options for you to consider at that time. We'll have a little bit less information to work with, because we won't have had the program in place for as long. And maybe I'll let Sean jump in here.
So I would echo that and echo what Shane said earlier. So, you know, the question was posed, how quickly could the deconstruction industry adapt to a quicker timeline? You could do it, but with growing pains. And so I think, you know, maybe some clogged ears would probably happen. But, and then, again, with what Michael mentioned, in terms of the pilot would just be less informative. We've kind of just gotten off the ground with it. So its ability to inform what those recommendations are for next steps will be somewhat limited.
So is it dumb question on my part, I should know the answer to this kind of question before I ask it. But is there a rhythm? I mean, obviously, there is to construction. Is there a rhythm over the course of the year in terms of if we have about, on average, a demolition a day? Is the peak in the summer?
Exactly. So we would miss that kind of peak construction window. But if, you know, if we're talking about fifty thousand dollars of money to use as incentives, and we're seeing twenty projects a year, even the ones that happen on the, kind of, the off-seasons are still going to be available to take advantage of an incentive. So we'd still have some, but the majority would probably occur more in the late spring, summer.
Here, can I follow up on that?
Please, yeah.
I was intrigued, although not persuaded, by an argument someone raised. I want to give you a chance to respond. And that is that in crafting an incentive plan, where we create an incentive for folks to use deconstruction, we are actually creating an incentive, further incentive for demolitions, and altering in some way the market. And I'm not really, I'm not persuaded just at face value with that, but I want to give you a chance to respond.
You want to take it, Sean?
Oh, staff or the person that mentioned it?
We'll get real reaction.
Yeah.
I'm more interested in your opinion than predicting their opinion.
I would say that the decision to demolish a structure and build a new structure is made well before any consideration of how the building's going to come down. And so in the grand scheme of the budget for a new house, and looking at clearing the site with an existing house, that difference in cost, any kind of incentive that we're going to be providing, I don't believe would push the needle towards having someone decide whether or not they want to demolish a building and build a new house.
And I'd add there, as a couple of the folks noted, it does, the initial cost to deconstruct is higher than to demolish. We want more developers, contractors, to get accustomed to seeing the value proposition there. And so the incentives are to get them to try it. We think the net cost, especially as the industry matures, is going to come down, and hopefully, we wipe out that premium. But it is there for sure as a perception, and in some cases, as a reality.
I'm also curious, you know, we have different approaches to incentivizing behavior that we talk about at this body. We have, for example, waived system development fee charges on accessory dwelling units, or certain fees on accessory dwelling units as a way of getting people to both do them within a legal framework and to reduce the regulatory burden. What are other examples where we've offered a financial inducement, rather than remove the barrier?
So we have a pretty long history in terms of energy efficiency, and also in the early days of getting the green building sector off the ground, of providing grants. I think Commissioner Saltzman certainly recalls the Green Investment Fund, where we're helping an industry that's emerging broaden and bring new firms, new kinds of projects to do those practices. I think there's a pretty strong parallel here. And we saw a lot of success. You know, a lot of the Portland's list of LEED-certified, LEED-platinum projects is incredibly long because the industry figured out a way to provide that and have it be competitive in the marketplace. Some incentives early on helped get us there.
So you have a toolkit that includes carrots and sticks, but you have a history of using the sort of carrots as a way of building a broader foundation of support for the changes that you're trying to get built into the system?
Yeah, I think that's a fair assessment.
If some of the effort is going to go into incentives to actually do deconstruction, and if some of the effort is going to go into training and capacity building, obviously, the training and capacity building can start right away, right? So you're not dependent on a project coming along that's willing to take the incentive and do something different in order to train people. So those are a little bit severable in terms of when things can start to make a difference, if I understand the program correctly.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
So there is funding for that capacity building and education part, as well as the incentive to the developers?
Correct.
And I noticed that there's, Metro is talking about a more regional approach. What might they be doing in terms of incentives versus requirements versus education and support?
So BPS staff works really closely with Metro staff on the subject of deconstruction, as well as actually accessory dwelling units. And I've spoken with Metro staff about the possibility of providing additional funds for this pilot program. And I think the beauty of that is that we get to take the work that we've done within the city and share the love with other jurisdictions. So in addition to the direct members that were on the advisory group, we had interest from both Clackamas County and Washington County, as well as folks from the Seattle Puget Sound area. So if we were to take a regional approach to this, we're just, you know, contractors don't necessarily work just in the city of Portland. They work, you know, they work in other boundaries as well. So a regional approach to this is just going to be that much more successful.
And how much longer does it take to deconstruct versus demolish?
It's really going to depend on a lot of factors. But if you were to try and average it down, you know, demolition takes one to two days. A deconstruction could take five to ten days. It's really going to depend on site access. There's issues like slope, where putting a piece of machinery on a steep site may be very difficult or even impossible, in which case the deconstruction project's going to be a favorable one in terms of the time and probably the cost.
But presumably, after you've demolished, there's a certain amount for cleanup, as well as reference with all the dust and other debris lying around.
So I'm sorry, not following the question.
Well, does the one to two days for demolition, does that include cleaning up the site thereafter?
So pretty much immediately, they'll start prepping the site for new construction. So they'll fill in the basement if that needs to happen, and then also remove the foundation. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty quick process when you're talking about demolition. The deconstruction's still going to require an excavator to come in and pull out a foundation and backfill.
I can attest to that. The bungalow next to my house that was demolished, I would be surprised if it took two days.
Yeah, I mean, there's, it can be done in a number of hours. There's videos out there that show it coming down pretty quick.
Well, I hear a strong community interest, and I share it in trying to move faster on some elements of this. I guess I would like to suggest that we amend the resolution to have you come back in January with a report and next steps, even if we haven't been through a full construction cycle on seeing how incentives are working. Because, again, there's some other policy tools that may be coming forward, will be coming forward for the council to consider, and that may be adopted. And I think I hear in the community a really strong and fervent interest in us moving quickly on this, and that the pace of change and the pace of demolition that's going with that change is worrisome to a lot of people, including us. So I'd be interested and propose that we amend the last line of the resolution instead of September two thousand and sixteen, to come back and report to us on program status and next steps in January of two thousand and sixteen, even if we...
Second.
Okay, so we've got a second to that motion. So any further discussion of that amendment? So let's act on that amendment, see if there's any other changes the council wants to make to the resolution. Roll call on accepting that amendment.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Fritz?
I appreciate the amendment, Mayor, and also the testimony. That does give the industry six months, and maybe some more fifty thousand in money could be put into capacity building. Because I intend to signal my intent to try to go further faster. And I appreciate the amendment. Aye.
Hales?
Aye. Okay. Any other revisions or recommendations from council before we act on the resolution in front of us? Okay, then let's take a roll call vote on the resolution.
Fish?
Thanks to the Planning and Sustainability Commission for bringing this forward. Mayor, thank you for your deep concern on this issue. We've been talking about growing pains, and I live in a neighborhood that's going through some growing pains. Sort of Grant Park, Beaumont, Wilshire, Hollywood area. And there's a lot happening at the same time that's impacting quality life. Traffic, noise, demolitions. In my neighborhood, apparently, it's now generally the view of anybody on a two- or four-wheel vehicle that a stop sign is optional. But there's other things going on, and it's having an impact. And, you know, once upon a time, we made a bargain that we would focus density in places where we could absorb it, and we would try to preserve the kind of character of some of our particularly traditional R-five neighborhoods. And it's a balance. And we're in the process of trying to strike the right balance. We have an urban growth boundary. We're required to accept density, and we understand that. But we're looking at ways of doing it that also doesn't unduly infringe on people's quality of life. So I think this has been a good discussion. I've heard some very good ideas. I think we're raising the public awareness about a lot of these issues, which is part of the essential process. I like the phase-in of starting with carrots before you get to sticks. And as a practical matter, it's always better if you can get buy-in and get people to participate, because you get a higher compliance rate, and you get a more thoughtful compliance rate. We don't want people deconstructing these homes in such a way that my friends at the Rebuilding Center can't find anything in what's been deconstructed that has a market value, because it was done in a shoddy way or not a thoughtful way. So I appreciate this conversation, and I appreciate the mayor's amendment, and I'll vote aye.
Saltzman?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and Bureau of Planning and Sustainability for bringing forward this pilot. I think it's something that I look forward to being very successful. And there's so much about deconstruction that makes sense to me. And I think to us, from a collective point of view, in terms of creating more jobs, creating fewer risk to public health and the environment in the process. And so I just think it's a very good thing, and hopefully, the industry will take advantage of these incentives, and we'll see it grow more widespread. Aye.
Quite frequently, when people in our neighborhoods come to us with concerns about what's happening in their neighborhoods, I'm sympathetic to the concerns, but I have to say that my sympathy is tempered with concerns about climate disruption and carbon emissions. For example, when people come and say, I don't like this apartment building without parking going up in my neighborhood, I can understand the disruption that that causes. But on the other hand, people in apartments use less carbon than people who live in houses. And when we have a collection of people living in a smaller space, then a grocery store springs up, and people are able to walk to the grocery store instead of drive. And if we require parking with every apartment, then we're in effect encouraging people to drive and emit more carbon. So that doesn't mean we can't figure out ways to address the concerns, but there's this constant balancing act with carbon emissions. So it's actually very nice to have people in our neighborhoods coming with concerns about something happening in their neighborhoods, where one of the arguments for their proposal is it will reduce carbon emissions. And according to BPS, deconstruction as opposed to demolition takes the equivalent of two cars off the road for a year for each house. So that's one major reason why I'm particularly sympathetic to this suggestion, and really appreciative of the mayor's efforts and BPS's efforts and all of the community activist's efforts. Thank you all. Aye.
Fritz?
I support the approach for many reasons. One, the committee worked very hard to come up with it, thanks to Nancy Thorington from Development Services, as well as to my staff working with Planning and Sustainability, the mayor's staff, Jackie Dingfelter and others, and indeed, your great work, Michael and Sean. It's a good recommendation. And also, it sounds like the capacity is not quite there yet to be able to require that deconstruction rather than demolition. I certainly would like to get there sooner rather than later for the reasons that Commissioner Novick just stated, that it meshes much better with our whole climate action plan and with our values as neighbors to do deconstruction as the normal thing to do in Portland. It's another way that keeping Portland weird is actually keeping Portland a good thing. And to the extent that we can get there quickly, I would like to see that. So thanks very much to the Development Review Advisory Committee and Mary Helen's leadership of it. It's telling that there isn't a storm of opposition. I'm sure that we'll have a robust discussion when we come back with considering mandatory deconstruction, and that says it should be. I'm sure we can get there. And I very much appreciate the Neighbors United for Reform and your constructive approach, no pun intended, to change the way development happens, knowing that development is going to happen. Let's do it in the best way possible. Thank you very much, and thank you for your leadership, Mayor, on this. Aye.
Hales?
Well, I want to thank the council for thoughtful discussion. I hope what you hear, those of you who are concerned about this issue, is there's a strong shared interest here and strong shared values that we're trying to express in policy and regulation and incentives, and that we hear and share the sense of urgency. I want to thank you, Michael and Sean, and Lisa Kane, and Jackie Dingfelter, and others who worked hard to get this discussion before the council now, and more to come. As I mentioned, I'm interested in working on the disincentive and taxation side of this issue, as well as on the regulatory and incentive side of this issue, to send an even stronger signal about keeping houses that are worth keeping. I was talking earlier this morning about, you know, one of the things about Portland that we don't necessarily brag about in those tourism books. We might brag about the restaurants. We might brag about the urban growth boundary in the great downtown. And there's sort of an obligatory trip where people come to Portland to study the city. But one thing they sometimes fail to notice is that we've got this mile after mile after mile of great old streets with great old houses. And most cities have a few neighborhoods like that, but we've got miles of that. And having worked in cities all over the country, you know, in the last ten years, who are trying to revitalize their downtowns the way ours has been, I noticed that, that they might have a few such neighborhoods, and it's such a treasure. And there's a lot of support for that architectural resource and for that way of life that we feel is under attack now with this amazing wave of change that's upon us, and I think is only going to get stronger. So I hope what we all hear is there's a lot of agreement about the need to be serious about that and to move quickly. And that's why I'm glad we changed the timetable a little bit, and obviously, going to keep tasking the bureau and others and in our city staff to help us prepare options for us as a community to consider. This is, I think, again, a great piece of work. I want to thank the deconstruction advisory group. We asked a lot of volunteers in this process, and some people with a lot of walking-around knowledge came together and did good work for us in a hurry. knowledge came together and did good work for us in a hurry, so thank you for doing that. It just occurred to me while we were actually having this discussion this afternoon, that it was actually 40 years ago this summer that I started helping my father and mom build a house. And it was a house that was built on the ruins of an old stone mill, where we actually logged timber on the property and milled the posts and beams that became the structure of the house. But then the floor of the house was 150-year-old heart pine that had been salvaged out of a factory in Lignum, Virginia. It's three inches thick, milled down to inch and a half thick flooring that we screwed down and pegged at great cost to knees and hands, but the beauty of that old material reused was part of the joy of that house. So if we do this right, we do it seldom, we do it in a way that respects the neighborhood around it, and then we reuse the materials in a thoughtful way, and there are people here in this room that do that every day, and we appreciate you, and we want you to do a lot more of it. So thank you all for this good work so far. More to come. Aye. Thank you all, and we're recessed until tomorrow at 2:00.
Mayor?
Yes.
Now we're recessed.[1697.82]